Will the clerk please read the statement?
This is the meeting of the Township of Vernon for Monday, March 10, 2014. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided to the public and to the press on January 8, 2014, and was posted at the Municipal Building in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSAC 10:4-6.
Please call the roll.
Councilman Kedesh.
Here.
Councilwoman Murphy.
Here.
Councilman Menzuto.
Here.
Councilman Wetzel.
Here.
Council President Lynch.
Here. Will you all join me to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have somebody new in the room tonight. I'd just like to introduce our new Township Clerk, Lauren Kirkman.
Hi, everybody.
Okay, at this time I'd like to have a motion to open the meeting to public comments.
To whom?
Motion made by Councilmember Kedesh. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Menzuto. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The floor is open to the public.
Technical. Good evening, Gary Martinson. One, I wanted to welcome our new clerk. Welcome to town, and I think you'll like our town. Sometimes you may not like me, but... When the new government formed, there were classes and instructions that the council went to. And part of that, in that, was the recommendation, and I forgot to check the code before I came here, but that it's better to have more open to the public than less open to the public in the vein of being transparent as possible. Now, I would have liked to seen, this is just a suggestion for future, it looks like you're going to have a discussion later, item number 10, and it's hard to tell what it's about, so again, we can't make any comments, but there might be something that after it, the public might like to say something. So if possible, open to the public then, and/or to move something like that to the beginning. I don't know exactly what it's about. The second thing is, at the last meeting, some comments were made specifically regarding my name and an entity I'm associated with. And I was hoping to approach, to explain misinformation that was provided, and I was cut short. And I don't think that's in the best interest of people that come to speak and/or the council. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My first question is to Dan Kedesh. Dan, at the last meeting, while the meeting was still open to the public, two individuals came forward who had already spoken once before and wanted to speak again. And you said that you felt that those two individuals should be permitted to come back and speak a second time. My question is, how many times should each member of the public be allowed to come up and speak?
Permission to answer?
Excuse me?
Permission to answer?
You have the permission to speak as you wish.
Essentially, if you set aside an amount of time for the public to speak, and everybody's finished speaking, and somebody else wants to come back to speak, there's absolutely no reason, in my opinion, that that person can't speak.
But that's not true.
We're up here to listen to information.
Okay.
We're up here to listen to the public, and if we shut them off, we're not listening.
Okay. Well, technically, what you said is inaccurate because you did not set aside an amount of time for the public to speak. You set aside five minutes for each person to speak. So assuming that that's your answer, that's fine. So then, is it your intention to just always keep allowing members of the public to keep getting up to refute something that the person before them said? And where do you draw the line?
As I understand it, it's a standard practice to set aside a period of time for public comment in most municipalities.
Okay. Well, I never heard you say that before, so I was just wondering, was this going to be a new policy, that anytime somebody says something-
I don't make policy. The entire council does.
Somebody else could get back up and refute what that person said. But thank you for your response. I handed you each something that I printed today. At the last meeting, I stated that I would object to, and I would oppose linking the township website to one of the local forums, which I believe to be a hate forum. The webmaster of that forum obviously objected to my statement and went home, and immediately posted on his forum that it would not actually be linked to it. Well, it might not be directly linked to the forum per se, but it links to a page that links to his other forums and pages, and you have the handout in front of you. This forum is replete with inaccurate information, defamation, disparagement, and even libelous statements. I, for one, have been the subject of a number of these false statements on that forum, and I spoke with the webmaster, and he did nothing about it. So I'm just here to say that I want to go on record that I would personally challenge any attempt to link the township website to this individual's website. That's not to say that I don't think it's a good idea for the township to put the meetings on their own website, but I would be opposed to putting it on any other website. And lastly, my comments are directed to Jean Murphy. At the last council meeting, you and Councilman Dan Kedesh, in my opinion, recklessly voted to put our township into default. You voted no to a simple, basic process of rolling over three bond anticipation notes that totaled about $6 million, knowing that the bands would soon come due. Not having been at that portion of the meeting because I left early to go to the BOE meeting, a couple of days later, I ran into you, and I asked you how you could have done such a thing. You told me you had no idea the township would otherwise go into default, and you stated repeatedly to me that Mr. Zuckerman, our business administrator, never said anything about the town going into default. Then I asked you why you didn't second Councilman Lynch's motion to separate the bonds when you repeatedly asked specifically for that to happen. You claimed to me that someone was talking to you, and you didn't hear that motion. At that point, I told you that I would give you the benefit of the doubt in what you said. I was shocked when watching the meeting on Service Electric Cable TV to hear Mr. Zuckerman say four different times before the vote that if you did not vote to roll over the bands, the township would go into default, the town's credit rating would plummet, and the town would not be able to borrow any more money. You and Mr. Kedesh voted no anyway. As for someone talking with you during Mr. Lynch's motion, the videotape shows clearly that no one was talking to you. In fact, no one was talking at all during that time. You could dispute that after I sit down, but the videotape will show that that's what happened. So I'm here to say that I am deeply disappointed that you abused my trust when you are actually being very disingenuous to me. And you, of all people, Ms. Murphy, a realtor in our township, whose job it is to bring people into the town, by your actions, you're keeping businesses and people out of our town. Your actions are hurting our township. Who would come to a town that's in default? What would our homes and property values be worth-
I'm sorry, Jesse. Jesse, that's five minutes.
...in a town in default? I'm done. Thank you.
Next, anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, Dorian Edwards, Highland Lakes. It's a sad day for me. I just prepaid my dad's funeral arrangements, but I felt it was necessary for me to come tonight because I'm very upset at what happened at the last town council meeting. And listening to Mrs. Palladini, I do agree, and I did watch the tape over. And if two councilmen can't understand basic accounting procedures, they were asked to -- they had asked to change the resolution. You were going to do that. Then they didn't say that they wanted to second it. I don't understand it. I don't want to see this town going into default, and I think it's a shame as to what had happened. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Motion to close the public comments portion. Moved. Motion made by Councilmember Menzuto. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wetzel. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mayor's report.
Good evening. It's nice to be back. My report this evening is short. Let me start by informing the council that due to business considerations and the amount of travel that our MUA Commissioner Stephen Picarello has been exposed to, he's tendered his letter of resignation. I will be bringing forward a nomination to replace Mr. Picarello as an alderman member to the Vernon MUA, hoping to do that by our second meeting in March. I also would like to call to your attention work that has been done, and in fact, details with much of what we will be talking about later on today. Part of the objective of this administration, in fact, to enhance the financial condition of Vernon Township. And at my request, our CFO has put together a Township Vernon Debt Service Schedule. That schedule actually shows that for the next 20 years, from 2014 through 2033, except for the year in which, which would be 2023, except for the year in which the bond anticipation notes that were floated to purchase the assets of the United Water Sewer Company, the yearly payment for bonds and notes and interest will in fact remain virtually the same. I will be forwarding to each of you, for your perusal, a look at that, but in essence, what it says is this. Of the $33.5 million in bond or note payment and interest that Vernon Township is responsible for, 26.6 million of that is the responsibility of taxpayers, 8.9 million of that is the responsibility of others, specifically Mountain Creek, the Vernon Municipal Utility Authority, and communities in which we are the guarantee of loan money for dam repair and other local assessments. This information, I think, is critical because, as we have discussed, our financial situation over the last several years, there seems to have been a mantra, if you will, that this government is financing its activities, its operating activities, through debt. You will see clearly from the debt schedule that is being provided that nothing could be further from the truth. Later this evening, we will be talking about and introducing the 2014 budget, and hopefully you will see clearly that the financial plan that has been laid out for Vernon Township for not only the next two years, but for the next 20 years, is a solid financial plan that keeps us very, very well positioned, that will see to it that our bond ratings will stay strong, and more importantly, that the people in Vernon, the taxpayers of Vernon, will not, in any way, shape, or form, should this plan be followed, be faced with a huge burden or increase on their property taxes at any time over the next 20 years. Obviously, I won't be here for that whole 20 years, and my guess is that neither will any of the members of this council. But in the very beginning, this governing body asked this administration to plan, to plan better than we've ever done before. And we now have a six-year plan to deal with the maintenance and repair of our roads and storm sewers. We now have a five-year plan to bring our -- which we are two years into, to bring our police department up to the requirements and the specifications that are necessary to meet the needs of this community. And we also now have a financial plan that we all can be very comfortable with, should the leadership of this community decide to follow it. So having said that, I would like to just simply move from here, and we will come back and talk about these things in a greater detail at the introduction of the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure that our political lives are short when it comes to the 20-year plan, but hopefully it's great news to hear this, as I'm going to hope to still be here in Vernon Township in 20 years and be able to take advantage of the prosper. Okay, at this point, I'd like to move to the consent agenda, Resolution 14-44, the calculation for reserve of uncollected taxes. If taxes levied in 2013 were reduced as a result of tax appeals through the court or county board of taxation, the governing body may choose to use the amount of the reduction in calculating the tax rate for the reserve of uncollected taxes for the current year 2000 -- in 2013, I'm sorry. Reserve of uncollected taxes for the current year. In 2013, the taxes were reduced by $326.60. Resolution 14-46 is an authorization of a stipend, provides a one-time stipend for the municipal clerk for relocation expenses. Relocation expenses have been provided to other employees via contract, and a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. Resolution 14-47, authorization for shared services agreement for the fire prevention office. This allows for a shared service agreement between Vernon and Hardeston Township. Hardeston will provide a fire prevention services at a cost of $1,500 per month until such time is needed. Not needed. Can I have a motion on these?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councilmember Kedesh. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Menzuto. Any questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kedesh.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Menzuto.
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel.
Yes.
Council President Lynch.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Okay, this would be the introduction of the first reading of a proposed ordinance. Ordinance 14-03, the ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. Mr. Jones, the auditor, where is he? There he is. Can provide a detailed technical explanation, but in brief, the state has set a cap or a limit in the amount of spending the municipality may make on items in order to keep the municipal taxes low. The cap bank or reserve allows that if a municipality does not spend all of the limit as allowed by law, it may bank or reserve that amount for the future years. And I think it's a two-year window. Okay. Can I have a motion to introduce this ordinance with a public hearing being held on April 14, 2014?
Moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Menzuto. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kedesh. Any discussion or comments from the council? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kedesh.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Menzuto.
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel.
Yes.
Council President Lynch.
Yes.
Motion carries through. Approved ordinance 14-03 on its first reading in a public hearing to be held on April 14, 2014.
Thank you. Okay, introduction of the 2014 municipal budget, Resolution 14-45, the introduction of the 2014 municipal budget. Mr. Mayor, at this time, will you please introduce your 2014 budget?
I am proud once again to introduce a budget for your consideration that will reduce the property taxes for Vernon Township for the third consecutive year. It will meet all of the needs. It will meet all of the needs as outlined in the work that has been done jointly between the governing body and the administration through our work sessions, and with many hours spent working together with Mr. Bill Zuckerman, our business administrator, and Mrs. Elka Gettr, our CFO. I am sure that when this evening's presentation is over, you will be impressed with the achievements of our municipal government on behalf of the people of Vernon Township. I alluded to the planning process in my mayor's report. This budget is a result of that work. That work done not only by the people that I've identified a second ago, but by every one of the department heads, every one of the division heads, and every one of the people that work in Vernon Township. It is heartening to see that they indeed have bought into the concept that we can do more with less. And in 2014, we will demonstrate once again that we are doing that, and we are doing it with operating expenses, not borrowed money. Having said that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Bill Zuckerman for his comments. Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to just take a minute to talk about fund balance. In the real world, we classify as retained earnings. In the year 2010, the township had $900,000 in their reserve, in their fund balance. At the end of December of '13, we have $3,352,000. We've added $4,008,000 to it, to the 901, and we've spent or used $2,003,000. That's before this year's budget. So we're starting out with retained earnings or a fund balance. The state doesn't like the word surplus. It's not a surplus. It's an accumulation of unused expenditures and monies that have come in. So we're starting tonight, or at the end of December, with $3,352,000. With that, Ms. Gettr is going to introduce and explain 2014.
Thank you.
Would I ask someone in the rear to? Thanks, Gary.
I apologize to you ahead of time, but I need to address the council because my back's going to be pretty bad. Good evening, council. I'd like to introduce tonight's budget for 2014. I've listed the governing body that's in effect at the time of the budget. The Vernon tax base is our net valuation taxable, which is the tax base of the taxpayers who are not exempt. So these are all the taxpaying people. And right now, our budget, our valuation is $2,656,000,000, which is a decrease of about $39,000,000, which is the result of tax judgments from the state and county boards. The 2014 total budget this year, as all shown in further slides, is $24,248,616,000, which is an increase of $1.1 million. If you look at the revenue, you'll notice that our shared services have gone up 61%. Our grants have gone up 31%. Our repayment of debt service by others, meaning Mountain Creek, the MUA, and the local assessments, has gone up 45%. And while all these items are going up or staying the same, you will notice that the amount to be raised by taxation is going down, $350,000. This slide here just shows breakout of the percentage of revenue by each category. If we switch over to appropriations or our expenses, you'll see that our shared service grants and the MUA, where it says "other," are also offset by revenue. So these are not costing the taxpayers any money. However, the benefits we get from grants and shared service, it allows us to do more without any burden for the taxpayers, so I wanted to point that out. We also, in this budget, are paying debt service, and in our debt service, we're paying principal on some of our bond anticipation notes, as well as additional principal beyond the required payments. We also have $150,000 going into the bond sinking fund once again to offset debt in the future. This slide here shows you the breakdown by percentage of what our total appropriations are. Now, if you take away all of the little miscellaneous things, you see 67.6% is for municipal purposes. We can break that out. 15% of that goes to general government, which is your manager's office, the finance, planning and zoning, all of the, most of the offices. Public safety, which is your police, fire, EMS, the Department of Public Works, community programs, senior center, parks and recreation, the pension and social security, which is your statutory expenses we have no control over, it's 12% of our budget, insurance, which includes our health insurance, our workers' comp, and our liability, and 3% is utilities. Now, the next slide shows you what we have to reserve for uncollected taxes. We are the collection agency for municipality, the county, and the schools. We have to pay the schools 100% of what their tax budget is, no matter if we get the money from the taxpayers or not. So therefore, we need to reserve in case we don't get paid. So this calculation that it's showing here is showing you where the money that we have to reserve and how it's calculated, because we have to pay. If the school came in at $43 million, like I have up on this slide, we have to pay $43 million to the school. So we have to reserve in case people don't pay or they pay late. So that's what that, that's how that calculation is taken into account. So now, what we want to know is our municipal tax up top. That's what we're voting on. This budget is municipal tax only. The school and the county is not for the council to vote on, that's for the Board of Ed and the county preholders. But the municipal tax is what we have the control over. And as you'll see, the tax rate is going down from .574 to .570. So what does that mean to the average taxpayer? The average tax value of a home is $219,359. That average tax bill will now be $1,025,000, or a drop of $22.95. And that's for the third year in a row that that's going down. So if you notice this, this is the allocation, for every dollar that a taxpayer spends in real estate taxes, 21 cents goes to municipal taxes. And that's all I have. So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well done with the slide presentation.
Yeah, we have to.
Counsel, any council members have a discussion item? Would you like to discuss any of this yet? Okay, please call a roll. Okay, can I have a motion to introduce this budget?
I'd like to make that motion proud.
Motion made by Councilmember Rizzuto. Can I have a second? I would like to second that. Please call a roll.
Councilmember Kadesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Yes.
Motion carries. Introduce the budget with a public hearing to be held on April 14th, 2014.
Certification of the clerk for petition regarding ordinance 1401. Does anybody have anything to discuss?
Council President Lynch, I just wanted to report that a petition was presented to the office of the clerk and has been certified by deputy clerk as having met a sufficient number of qualified voters in regards to ordinance 1401 pursuant to NJSA 48,9-165, and therefore will be placed on the ballot at the next general election.
Thank you. Councilmember Kadesh, do you have any comments?
Well, basically, I've been asked to explain my vote at the last meeting about bundling the bond, the bans. And the only reason I wanted it separated is because the sewer ban was being included and bundled with other bans. And when it gets converted to a permanent debt, a permanent bond, it would hide the sewer in with that $6 million. And it's always been said that the taxpayers were not to be paying for the sewers. So while Bill mentioned that Vernon Township is the ownership of the sewers, eventually it's supposed to be turned over to the MUA. So that was the only reason. And if we waited that long for a ban to be approved, and the following day, the town's going into default, then we waited too long. I really think that a mountain's been made out of a molehill in terms of that subject, but that the taxpayers are not supposed to be paying the debt for the sewers.
Please, let the council member speak.
And it was my effort to keep that clear and separated the reason why I voted that way. And I still feel that it shouldn't be included with the other bonds, or bans rather.
Councilmember Murphy?
A question I have, has Andy Mullehill been rescheduled yet to come and go over the pilot programs?
No, not yet.
Water Park?
We'll give you that information when we get it.
Okay, because I was just wondering, because I think I had asked you, Brian, if the mayor had received any information that we would be able to have ahead of time. So if there were any documents, I would like to get a hold of them before he came. That's all I have.
That's it? Councilmember Wetzel?
No comment.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
The only comment I have is that, as you all know, this past weekend, we moved into daylight savings time. We have extended daylight. Thank God, get rid of some of the snow. At least make it seem that way. But I just wanted to bring this to the attention of the public because now we are going to have youngsters on the road a little bit longer and just please observe your driving habits in that regard.
Unfortunately... Is that it? Unfortunately, I have to talk about the most uncomfortable discussion Vernon Township has ever had in its history. The accidental tripping of the dispatch button to the police department underneath the desk gear. It has come to my attention through Rob Jennings that this is a much-needed story in the New Jersey Herald. I think that, I just want everybody to realize that this has never been done on purpose. Steps are being taken for it to be mitigated so accidental trips cannot happen. No one is going to be escorted out of here by policemen unless they do something illegal. And quite frankly, if I wanted to have a police officer here, the town code affords me the authority to have a police officer standing in the room at all times. So having a police officer here is not something that is on my, in my wheelhouse. Quite frankly, they're only 13 steps away downstairs every time we are in a meeting here anyway. So quite frankly, if any discomfort was made to any citizen due to the fact of the police showing up, it was not intentional, it was unfortunate circumstance, unintended too. So at that point, I hope that that is sufficient explanation. Also, St. Patrick's Day is coming up, and I'd just like to everybody to have a happy St. Patrick's Day. With that, anybody? Yeah?
I just wanted to bring everybody's attention, in case you did not see it in the paper, but Vernon does have a young man by the name of Danny Monzo, who will be participating in the Paralympics, and I believe that day is on the 14th. It's on the snowboarding event.
Thank you.
Just thought.
Mr. President, if I may, there is a handout of the budget information for anyone from the public that would like to have it that is a mirror of the presentation.
Did everyone hear that? Anybody that would like to hand out? With that, motion to adjourn? Motion made by Councilmember Rizzuto, second.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Kadesh. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
How did we do, Lauren?